Everybody please stand.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, January 15, 2019. The time is now 7:26. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in the November 29, 2018, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Minutes.
We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for December 4, 2018, and December 18, 2018. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for minutes. Communications. The Nutley Irish American Alliance has submitted an event application for their 41st St. Patrick's Day Parade to be held on Saturday, March 2, 2019, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Franklin Avenue, down to Harrison, and ending on Chestnut Street. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Reports. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, Mayor. I have a sheetroot report for the month of December 2018.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, Mayor. I have the code enforcement report for the fourth quarter 2018, as well as the year-end report for Millennium Strategies and their grant activities for 2018.
Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, I have our public safety report, and I have to tell you, I urge -- I urge people to get a copy of this because it'll give you a good idea, like, just for the month of December, the calls for service for the police department was 5,942 calls. That was just for the police. So, it's some interesting reading.
Thank you. Bills, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Bill list for January 15, 2019. Public Affairs, zero. Revenue and Finance, $3,391,871.20. Public Safety, zero. Public Works, $420,738.33. Parks and Public Property, $699,939.33. Water Utility, $4,811.34. Total Payroll is $820,821.19 for a grant total of $5,338,181.39.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comments on agenda items only. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. All Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or Presiding Officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, I'd like to refer to Mr. Evans, the millennial strategies, the report there, and I was looking at the bill list for the overtime for public safety. I do have a question. Is there a relationship, because under awards, we seem to have received $26,000 for overtime in the grants, and I wanted to find out, this, this, it looks like this two-week period, we paid $34,000 in overtime for public safety, is that correct, for two weeks?
It's on the bill list, but that's a --
It's on the bill, it's right here, it's on the bill list.
That would be a question directed to Commissioner Scarpelli.
I can answer that. I would believe that information is correct, and it is a little high that month, and the reason why it's for December is all the added patrols we do, you know, because Christmas season is also home robbery season, and that's when we spend a little extra money to ensure the safety of the residents.
The reason I was curious, because on the millennial list, it says overtime, and it indicates holiday season. That means if we didn't receive these awards, the overtime would be higher? Is that my understanding correct?
Just real quick, which line item, other report?
It should be the first, third, and fourth.
I could just answer the first leg of that question and say, no, overtime would still be the same despite any grant or anything, because we budget that overtime dollars every year, as you know, and if you track it, you know, the summertime with vacation season, things like that, it peaks a little bit, and then the holiday season, like I said, we had a lot of extra patrols out to do that. So, just, the difference in the number of the 34,000, I don't think that would change. As far as grant money that we've received and gotten in, and that we could use that money for funding our budget, it goes into, if it's a public safety grant, we get that into our kind of, you know, general fund, not directly into the overtime account.
Well, it stipulates overtime.
So, there's about 27,000.
About 26, 27.
27,000.
It looks like it was --
And those were for very specific initiatives.
Yes.
So, the clicker, clicker, or ticket, I think, activity, overtime reimbursement for that, that would, that money would be grant received, and would go to offset costs in the Public Safety Department. I don't know, as far as the bill list, what the 34,000 specifically represents in relation to these, because this is the annual, this is the annual report, so I don't know which months these, in this particular report, when we got that grant money.
No, that's fair enough. It's just that it looked like there's 26,000 somewhere being contributed for overtime uses here.
Yes, but we did get those awards.
But if the $34,000 is just for two weeks, that's rather high.
But just to be specific, too, like, that grant money for ticket or clicker, those man-hours have to be specific for that initiative. It's not that we just get it, and then, in Christmas time, we want to add on patrols, and we could take that money for clicker and ticket, and transfer it towards that. They have to, you have to do, you know, have those man-hours allocated for that specific duty.
I would, I would think so. But is 34,000, is that for two weeks?
Yeah, it's for payroll. However --
No, that's overtime. That's not payroll.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, I believe it's for a two-week period. That's how we run, yeah.
So, isn't that rather high for two weeks?
I would say that if it wasn't Christmas time, and like I said, that we take a proactive approach in patrolling these streets and adding on to our complement at that time, and, you know, and this year, we hardly had, I believe we only had one house break-in, which, you know, traditionally, it's much higher. So, do we traditionally spend that kind of money during the holiday season? Yes, we do. We beef up patrol that time of year. And I think, and I think that it's really money well spent, and only having the one house break-in, but having these extra patrols out, you don't know what those guys prevent it also, you know, by having, you know, extra duties out there. So, I think it's money well spent, Rory.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Items Only? Seeing none, Board of Commissioner announcements?
Yes, Mayor, I have one. What I'd like to summarize as briefly as I can is my long-awaited white paper on the effects of multifamily housing on the township, and it will be up on the, on the website tomorrow. I believe John Lee from The Patch has it. I know Rory has the copy that I promised him, and it'll be available for public consumption. So, what I'd like to start with is just with a definition, for those of you who are not familiar with the white paper. A white paper is an authoritative reporter guide that informs readers concisely about a complex issue and presents the issuing body's philosophy on the matter. It's meant to help readers understand an issue, solve a problem, or make a decision. Additionally, this white paper is intended to initiate thought, discussion, and solicit public input relative to measuring the impact of multifamily housing and what it's had on the township, and what, if any, additional units can be supported from a service, physical, and psychological perspective. Throughout the report, I summarized the methodology I used. I went department by department, and I'd like to thank all the Commissioners for their cooperation, as well as the Nutley Board of Education, and all of our boards, our Planning Board, our Zoning Board, and the other boards that gave me input for this, and you can read it at your leisure. I welcome comments and any other input that people would like to provide. The synopsis of this white paper is, at the beginning of this paper, I provided the definition, which I just read to you, of what a white paper is and what it provides. I presented information as provided by all the departments in the school district, along with my own observations of the impact that multifamily housing is having on our township. The effect of the housing, all right, is very complex, all right? It's multifaceted, and it impacts our physical appearance, our infrastructure, township services and expenses, taxes, and an intangible psychological effect on our perception of what our township is and what it is becoming. One of my greatest concerns, all right, is the erosion of what I've often referred to as our deep-root commitment to our hometown. We've been as stable and attractive to both our existing residents and those who would be residents because of our enviable, rich sense of community, which keeps generation after generation of Nutleyites returning to live and raise their families here. Our property values, as everyone's aware of, are the envy of many of our surrounding communities because of who and what we are. The addition of over 2,200 multifamily units, all right, concerns me, not because of who our new neighbors are, but rather because they are renters, and as such, may not ever establish the deep roots that many of us have. The nature and character of this township, in my opinion, should never substantially change. Change is not necessarily a bad thing or something I'm opposed to, but it needs to be managed and planned properly. Our recipe for success has been one of our many constants due to the commitment and foresight of our professionals and our town leaders. We agree and disagree on many issues, which I'm sure will include some of the findings and opinions that are in this paper, but at the end of the day, the future of our township must always come first. I believe that additional study is required and should be done immediately. The additional units that have been built and those that are in the pipeline are already having effects, some which are obvious, some others which are not so obvious, that need to be measured and managed. So, basically, that's a summary of what this paper is all about and what the intent is. So, I invite everyone to read it, to send me your comments, and we can, if need be, we can schedule a forum, and we can have an open discussion about what the future of our township is going to look like, and what impacts multifamily housing, and I'm sure in the future, we can also talk about other developments, including what's going on on Three, potential development of the swim club, and anything else that comes up. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner, we have that put up on the website.
Yes. If it's not up already, it'll be up tomorrow morning.
Very good.
It would have been up already. We had a little transmission issue with my computer, even though IT is under my department, but I'm sure we'll rectify that.
I have an announcement. I would like to congratulate our clerk, Lenny Pettis, on being elected to President of the Essex County Clerk's Association. Madam Clerk, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Let's move to ordinance introductions. Commissioner Petracca, we're going to table ordinance number 3413.
Correct.
Okay. Ordinance number 314, 3414, has the long-awaited mixed-use density ordinance. Chris Colley's here from Topology. Chris, you want to say a couple of words on the ordinance?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. My name is Chris Colley. I'm with Topology. I'm joined by my colleague, Greer Patress. We were asked by the town to comment on the standards that were developed internally by staff and members of the Board, and that are incorporated into this new ordinance. The major flaw with the existing ordinance is that the standards for mixed-use buildings that are included are poorly explained, and in certain cases, they're confusing, and in certain times, they simply don't apply to mixed-use buildings. For example, in the existing ordinance, there are no minimum dwelling unit sizes or lot widths for mixed-use buildings. So, not having these regulations makes it difficult for the town to regulate the types of development that comes in. The ordinance, as proposed tonight, fixes a lot of those problems, and it puts forth regulations for mixed-use buildings that allows the town to better regulate and better control the type of development that comes in. In the ordinance proposed tonight, the standards that are set forth for mixed-use buildings are consistent with the standards for other types of buildings that are already in those other districts. So, what this ordinance really does, in most cases, is it takes the existing standards for other building types, and it applies them simply to mixed-use buildings. And in doing so, it remedies the problem of not having bulk standards for mixed-use buildings, as the ordinance was previously written. So, I think this is a great step forward. There's always elements for clarification. We're happy to work with the town and continue to clarify items as necessary, and in terms of sort of establishing and achieving the township's goal of creating standards and requirements for mixed-use buildings, I think the ordinance is successful.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
I would like to thank Topology and Paul Ricky, our two planners. I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for your input, Code Department for looking at this, so that they're the ones that have to interpret it, so they had some input on this, and especially like to thank the Planning Board members and the Subcommittee who put forth the original recommendations. Some of those have been clarified. We think that the ordinance is very clear right now. It calls for 28 units per acre, has a 30% commercial minimum requirement on the first floor, and a minimum of 925 square feet for a one-bedroom apartment. So, there's some, I'm sure the Commissioners are going to go through this before the public hearing, but I'd like to introduce this ordinance, number 3414, an ordinance to amended ordinance, codified in the code of the township, Nutley, Chapter 700, entitled zoning, particularly Article III, entitled terminology definitions, Article V, general regulations, Article VI, Article VII, use regulations, mixed use, Article IX, guard apartments, and Article 13, parking spaces and loading berths. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading, advertised in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at a second reading on February 19, 2019. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Let's move on to public hearings. Ordinance number 3406, an ordinance to amended ordinance, codified in the code of the township of Nutley, Chapter 484, entitled parking lots, municipal, particularly the following sections, Article I, Section 8, title hours of operations, parking fees, and monthly parking. Open the public hearing. Anybody want to be heard on ordinance number 3406? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Commissioner, you want to comment on the other two ordinances?
Yes. I had hoped that we would have the next two ordinances, 3411 and 3412, on for a public hearing tonight. They relate to the pilot or financing agreements related for two buildings on the Roche property. A matter came up today that required some legal investigation to resolve it, so there wasn't enough time to do that, so these will be tabled and be on, and they'll stay on the agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rogers, resolutions?
Resolution number 1419, designating the month of February as National Health, National Heart Health Month. As, move it as written.
Second. Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That's it, Mayor, thanks. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, we're a sealed bid to receive for electrical services on December 27, 2018, in the township of Nutley, and we're a Sal Electric, 83 Fleet Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, was the lowest bidder at the rates of, for per hour for Foreman, $101.91. For Journeyman, 85.86. For Apprentice, $28.50. No add-on for materials, and no minimum service charge. Whereas, as per the bid specification, the contract term is from January 1, 2019 through December 31, 2019, with the option to extend for one year, and whereas the contract is not to exceed $90,000, the funds are available from account number 9-01-508-200, in the amount of $40,000, in capital ordinance 3372A, in the amount of $50,000 for services contingent upon the adoption of the 2019 municipal budget with an option to extend for one year, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract for electrical services be awarded to Sal Electric, 83 Fleet Street, Jersey City, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Fisher Evans?
Thank you. Whereas RS 48:517 allows for the cancellation of property tax credits or delinquent amounts in the amount of $10 or less, whereas the governing body may authorize the tax collector to process without further action on their part any cancellation of property tax credits for amounts that are $10 or less, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, State of New Jersey, that we authorize our tax collector to cancel said amounts as deemed necessary, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas RS 54:467 permits the governing body of each municipality to fix the rate of interest to be charged for non-payment of taxes or assessment subject to any abatement or discount for late payment of taxes provided by law, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, one that the tax collector is hereby authorized and directed to charge 8% per annum. This is the minimum amount that's allowed by state statute. It's not set by the municipality, it's set by the state, so it's just something we have to comply with. The rates can go up to 18%, but we're fixing it at the minimum of 8%. 8% per annum on all taxes becoming delinquent after the due date, subject to any abatement or discount for the late payment of taxes provided by law. Effective January 1, 2019, quarterly payments made by cash, check, or money order shall have a 10-day grace period. Any payments not made in accordance with Section 2 will be charged the interest rate from the due date, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, the Treasurer being chief, is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges in the amount of $32,557.12 for the tax lots and blocks listed below, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, the Treasurer being chief, is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of property taxes in the amount of $797 for Block 1200/2/5408, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
My next resolution is a change order for the law firm of Pyrosen, Sefeli, Paris, and Genetempo, regarding our resolutions made in August and in, August of 2018 and in December of 2018. The change order is for an amount of $270, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley. The change order number three, in the amount of $270, is hereby approved, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas New Jersey statutes 48:419 provide that where debt service is to be paid in 2019, prior to the time of the final adoption of the 2019 budget, temporary appropriation should be made in the amount of such debt service in a manner and time therein, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, that the following temporary appropriations are made. Total current debt service, $125,680, for $608 for the current fund, and for the operating utility, $33,079, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas 48:419, local budget law provides that any contracts, commitments, or payments to be made prior to the final adoption of the 2019 budget, a temporary appropriation may be made for the purpose and amounts required. Whereas the total appropriation in 2018 budget, less appropriations made for capital improvements, debt service, and public assistance are as follows. Current fund, $49,893,45. Water utility, $4,406,05. Whereas 26 1/4% of the total appropriation in 2018's budget, less appropriations for capital improvement, debt service, and public assistance in said 2019 budget, would be current fund, $12,885,951.76. The water utility, $1,155,158.81, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the following temporary appropriations be made, and that a certified copy of this resolution is transmitted to the Chief Financial Officer for her records for the various accounts covering the Mayor's Office, Public Works, Public Affairs, Revenue and Finance, and Parks and Recreation, as well as Public Safety, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Where certain capital improvement appropriation balances remain dedicated to projects now completed, whereas it is necessary to formally cancel said balances so that the unexpended balance may be returned to each respective capital improvement fund or credited to surplus, and unused debt authorizations may be canceled, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, that the following unexpended dedicated capital balances, capital appropriations be canceled for the ordinance numbers listed for a total of $205,203.50, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci. Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that in accordance with the provisions of RS 48:4-59, the following transfer of the 2018 appropriations reserves may and same are hereby authorized and approved, from unemployment compensation, $55,000, to economic development, $50,000, and township attorney, O&amp;E, $5,000, for a total of $55,000, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
My last resolution tonight, it relates to a request for bids to hire an appraisal company to begin a process of revaluing the property of the township. We have been ordered to do so by the Essex County Board of Taxation and the state, and we're subject to a periodic, periodic review. So this particular resolution will initiate a process to identify an independent appraisal company to come in and actually execute a review of all of the property in the township. Whereas the Township of Nutley has been ordered to revalue all properties within the township. The township is desirous of achieving a fair and equitable distribution of the property taxes by ensuring that every taxpayer pays his or her share, a fair share of the property tax. Whereas NJSA 11-4.1 provides that competitive contracting may be used for the procurement of specialized goods and services, the price of which exceeds the bid threshold. Whereas the Division of Local Governmental Services and the Division of Taxation recommend the use of the competitive contracting process for the proposal solicitations in connection with the revaluation of real property within the township. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the township clerk be and is hereby authorized to advertise a notice for the availability of requests for proposal documentation for the revaluation of all real property in the township to be received at the municipal clerk's office, 1 Kennedy Drive, on February 15 at 11:00 a.m. prevailing time. The proposals will be evaluated in accordance with the methodology that is provided in the documentation, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Petracca?
Whereas NJSA 9-41 requires that emergency management council be formed by coordinator of disaster control activities on behalf of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey. We have one change on here, I believe, and that is we have Thomas Nicoletti retiring from the fire department, who's done an excellent job in this role. William Cassidy, who just finished number one on our lieutenants list on the fire department, I am appointing him to the emergency management coordinator position. So I want to wish Will a lot of luck in there. I want to tell, say, that Thomas Nicoletti did a great job, and we appreciate all your dedication and years of service. He was unbelievable. And we wish Will Cassidy all the luck in the world. I think he's going to be great. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Anthony Barrino, employee of Department of Public Safety, be granted an extension of medical leave of absence without pay effective January 5, 2019 through March 5, 2019. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And my last resolution, 2019, I'll just read by title. This is for one of our fire trucks. It's a new engine, not a new engine, but a rebuilt engine that we need, and in order to do it, we needed to pass a resolution. So I move Resolution 28-19 by title.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organization, Rotary Club of Nutley, license number 4-19, on-premise 50/50 cash raffle, and license number 5-19, on-premise merchandise raffle to be held Saturday, March 23, 2019. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, if the aforementioned licenses are approved and municipal clerks authorized the issue of raffle license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Polyche LLC, 60 Union Street, North New Jersey, has been awarded a non-fair and open contract as a professional service pursuant to provisions NJSA 19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate to provide professional planning services primarily related to the ongoing redevelopment of the Hoffler Roch and Chicolini properties in Township of Nutley on June 8, 2017 by Resolution Number 133-17. Whereas such services have exceeded the original contract in the amount of $50,000. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we recommend that the following change order from said contract, change order number one, provides professional planning services primarily related to the redevelopment of Hoffler Roch and Chicolinis to increase in the amount of $64,200. Whereas funds are available from account number 801-226-205, and certified the Chief Financial Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one, the amount of $64,200 be and is hereby approved. I move the resolution, but just that will be reimbursed by our redevelopers, so move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the law firm of Pyros Inn and Sefeli Paris and Genetempo, 360 Passaic Avenue, Nutley, New Jersey, has been awarded a non-fair and open contract as a professional service pursuant to provisions of NJSA 1944A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate to provide legal advice and services in connection with the township's land use litigation for the township of Nutley on February 6, 2018 by Resolution 46-18. Whereas such services have exceeded the original amount of the contract of $17,000. Whereas the Board of Commissioners recommend that the following change order from said contract provide legal services, services in connection with the township's land use and litigation with the township of Nutley in the amount of $1,136. Whereas funds are available from account number 801-012-205, and certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one in the amount of $1,136 be and is hereby approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas bids for the collection of services, coal mingled recycling material, were received and opened on December 13, 2017, and whereas F. Bassel Rubbish Removal, 55-93 South 20th Street, Irvington, New Jersey, was awarded a contract for the project by Resolution Number 1818 on January 16, 2018. Whereas the term of the contract shall be extended for one additional year beginning February 1, 2019 through January 31, 2020, as per the bid specifications in the amount of $169,450. Whereas funds are available from account number 901-424-200 in the amount of $169,450, have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to F. Bassel Jr. Rubbish Removal not to exceed $169,450, and that the mayor and the township clerk are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract for the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas bids for the 2017 acceptance of recycling, vegetative waste, including leaf and grass clippings, were received and opened on January 25, 2017. Whereas S. Rotundi and Sons, P.O. Box 1407, Summit, New Jersey, was the low bidder for the removal and recycling of Class B clean wood brush in the amount of $6.75 per cubic yard, the removal of recycling of Class C leaves in the amount of $8.15 per cubic yard, and for the removal of recycling of Class C grass clippings in the amount of $14.69 per cubic yard. Whereas the terms of this contract was for one year from the awarded date with an option of a two-year extension at the same price and agreed upon pre-stated increase and subject to availability of funds in the subsequent annual budget. Where the terms of contract should be extended for one year, beginning February 7, 2019 through February 6, 2020, with the same price option subject to the availability of funds in the annual budget. Where the funds are available from account number 901-422-209, in the amount of $71,000 subject to the adoption of 2019 municipal budget, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to S. Rotundi and Sons not to exceed $71,000, and that the mayor and the township clerk are hereby authorized to enter into and sign said contract for the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Before Madam Clerk reads the notice, turn it over to Commissioner Rogers.
Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for coming tonight. I know many of you have come so that we would have a public discussion on the issue of term limits. Now, there's one thing that I'd like to make clear. The reason why this was advanced was to help encourage people to get involved in our township governance. We want to see more people become involved. People feel they're shut out, they feel that they have no chance of getting on any boards, and that doesn't mean that's reality, it's a perception, to a certain degree. But I want to hear, I really want to hear from everyone this evening. I think it's important that we go down a road, which we did last week, and I was rather impressed. I think we're one of the few towns that had as many people at a meeting as we had and had good, solid, articulated discussion. So I want to hear from you tonight. I know the Board of Commissioners wants to hear from you tonight, and I got some ideas after everyone speaks that I would like to advance to you. But the whole idea, the whole idea is an idea that's sweeping across this country, it's not only Nutley. From Congress to local-level governments, people are looking to get involved, and they're looking for term limits for no other reason but to get new, fresh ideas. Now, there's one thing that I did, well, I left the last meeting with a few things, but something was very profound at last week's meeting, at least for me, and in speaking to some of the people, for them. The library board. I did not know, and I could tell you, a lot of people did not know the work and the things that you have done for that library. No idea. I was impressed, I'll tell you what, I went home thinking, they're doing one hell of a job. Which leads me to this, and then I'll stop, and then you could speak. I've said all along since I came here in 2012, we do good things in this town, but the one thing we really need to do is start marketing all the good things we have. So if there's a perception out there, and perception is reality, we got to work together to change that perception. So I'll stop, and Mr. Mayor, thanks for giving me the floor, and I think we're all ears, and then maybe we'll come to some satisfactory conclusion tonight as to where we go from here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before I turn it over to the Madam Clerk, I did send out to the Commissioners the list of the boards and the members on the boards that were two terms or less. As Commissioner said, sometimes, you know, perception is reality, right? But when you look at our boards, if you look at the Historic Preservation Board, out of the seven members, three have less than two terms, less than full terms. On the library board, out of the seven members, one is less than two, she's rather new. On the planning board, out of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, out of 11 people, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 are less than two full terms. On the zoning board, out of the 11 people, seven are new members. On the rent levelling board, out of the members, only one is a new member on that board. But I think, like you said, as perception is reality, I don't think people realize the number of new people that are on those boards. So with that, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners first on term limits, and then we'll move to anything else?
John Demmer, Town Historian, 263 Harrison Street. Once again, I find myself here in front of a microphone, speaking against term limits for volunteer boards. I've gone over this proposed ordinance in my head for the past several weeks, and I still can find no real reason or justification for it. The mechanisms for reappointing or removing board members are already in place, and this ordinance is just a doubling up on a system that, in my opinion, is working just fine. Since last speaking with you, my board needed a new member. One was suggested to us, and other than some minor Facebook interaction on my Town Historian page, no one really knew this member, but she wanted to join, and we welcome her participation. Maybe it will work out, and she will like it and stay, maybe it won't, and she'll leave. But the point was, she was given the chance to participate, and not at the cost of losing a seasoned member. This is the way it is, and this is the way it should be. In taking an inventory of my own board, I've counted almost four times as many people who have come and gone during my tenure as there are people that have served two terms or more. Again, there is no need for this ordinance. It only serves to hurt boards with volunteer members that are already naturally fluid. It's also my understanding that one of the leading petitioners for term limits also obtained a spot on a well-known board. This is terrific, and in my opinion, it was not an ordinance change that did it, it was the vocalization of that group, looking to make sure that there is no favoritism against anyone and that the system is working. That was the best thing that did come out of this all. Their concerns were made, they were addressed, they were answered. As a volunteer, I try to give everything I can to the groups I'm involved with, and the fact that I'm here, along with many others, tonight, is an ongoing part of that volunteerism. Once again, we are here of our own free will, away from our friends and families, trying to do good for the town. What bothers me most about this proposed ordinance is that not one specific example has ever been given to me. No one said, here's exhibit ABC, here's who's been excluded. Also, out of the 565 municipalities in New Jersey, I can't find another municipality that is addressing this on volunteer boards. Why are, why are we? Also, there's the question of MLU laws, which still have to be looked into. You can call as many meetings as you want, and I will be here to fight for our rights as volunteers every time. I even hear that there's possibly a committee that might be formed, and if one is done, I will spend my time to address that committee too. Please do me one favor before calling another meeting or setting a committee. I know Mr. Genetempo's been very busy, he's got a lot on his plate, but can we please take some time out, give him adequate time to look into the MLU, to see whether this is even allowed or necessary? We might be putting the cart before the horse here. This might all be for nothing. I think the existing way that we are conducting these boards is appropriate. I'm going to sit down for a little while and listen to both sides, and listen to more people, but I am very sick, very tired, and possibly a little cranky tonight. but I am very sick, very tired, and possibly a little cranky tonight. But again, I will meet with you as many times as it takes to show you that this ordinance is unpopular, unwarranted, and a duplication of efforts. But just to let you know on a personal level, the more times that I'm called here, the less I feel like it's about an ordinance that is supposed to do some kind of good, and the more I feel like I have to come here to plead to be a volunteer for the town of Nutley. And that's a very uncomfortable feeling. So again, I politely ask that we move off this subject, out of respect for those already fully fluid, functional volunteer boards, and for the people who so generously volunteer their time on them. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on term limits?
Carol Tangora, 43 Colonial Terrace, Nutley. I currently serve as chairperson of the planning board. I want to commend the mayor for appointing a lot of new people to the various boards. I think that as each new person has been appointed, they have brought something special to the board, and the interaction on all the boards has been a very positive one. May I ask, Mayor, has Mr. Janatempo looked into this? Can we have any kind of a discussion or opinion as to the legality? I myself have discussed it with lawyers from all over the state, and everyone has said the same thing. It's not legal. So I would like to know, before we waste any more time on this, is it legal? Are we spinning our wheels when we could well afford to, you know, spend our time doing more positive things?
I don't know the answer to that, Ms. Tangora. Mr. Janatempo?
Sure. Mr. Mayor. Ms. Tangora, first, let's understand where we are today. I think Commissioner at the last meeting was very clear, even said, he's done his own research, in conjunction with my research, in that specific term limits are not legal. I think the Commissioner's looking for different feedback, and Commissioner, I don't wanna speak for you, of course, but I've given my opinion on that, and I don't disagree with you. But I think we're not talking about the particular term limits right now on the boards, I think the Commissioner's looking for input on what he thinks might help provide more participation from people. So I'll let the Commissioner, if he wants to comment, obviously, it's his move. But there's no resolution pending, there's no ordinance pending on anything related to term limits tonight, and there's been no modification from the last one that we had about a month, or I guess about two months ago.
Thank you. So then, you know, I can only say that I commend the mayor for bringing as much, you know, new participation to the boards as he has. Thank you so much.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on term limits?
Rory Moore, 462 Chesnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, I did call the League of Municipalities, and I spoke with their attorneys extensively, there is no law, per se, that to prevent any town from introducing an ordinance for their town to impose term limits. I believe it was Ms. McGovern stood here and provided some citations. I did not have any of her citations, and I decently researched on this. And I also called DCA, and DCA said the same thing, that there is no law on the books today that says a town cannot impose term limits on boards that are appointed. I don't really understand why it has to be this way, because some people want to participate, and if you're gonna sit here and say, oh, it's illegal, it's against the law, it's not. It's what people, I think, are looking for, is an avenue to say, I would like to be on a particular board. And I think they should be able to say, somewhere, Mr. Scarpelli, I wanna serve on the zoning board, or I would like to serve on the library board. They might not do it right away, but at least their name is there, the opportunity, when it presents itself, will be able to be available to somebody that's interested. There's other individuals who have come and said that they were looking for people on their boards. Well, how do you know that? Why don't you just let the general public know? Yes, there is an avenue to get onto a board. I think that's what people are asking for. And as Mr. Scarpelli, Tucci said, this town is now starting to change. We're going from single-family homes, and we're gonna have a lot of apartments coming in very shortly. Some people might actually want to participate in the town, and it's just fair to say, if people should have that available to them, and we should not scare people by saying it's illegal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Just so you know, we're working with the IT department, so that people can upload, not really their resume, but their address and some background information, so that that'll be like a pool of people for us to, whoever the mayor is, to put onto the boards. I can tell you that in the last month, I interviewed some people, sat down, I wouldn't even call it an interview, we sat down and talked with some people, and out of that, we appointed some new people to the boards. So the process is working, and I'm not gonna comment on the legal ramifications. I'll have, maybe Mr. Janatempo, reach out to you, see who you spoke with, with the League of Municipalities. So. Anybody else? Mr. O'dreya?
Michael O'dreya, 133 High Street. If term limits is good enough for our president, and good enough for the governor of the state, it's good enough for anyone who wants to be in a position of power in our town, county, or state. I wouldn't be for term limits, but I have to be, because I'm forced to be. Because the way I have seen our planning board of this town allow more apartment buildings and apartments we built in this town, which has overcrowded our school system to the point where our school system is dragging us, has dragged us twice to the voting booth on a $70 million referendum. Yeah, I'm for term limits. I am damn right for term limits. We need term limits in this town. We gotta have fresh bread that stands for the homeowners of this town. So we don't want, what happens in the planning board and zoning board, they have a lot of power and a lot of say, which affects our property taxes when it comes to our school system. And plus, not only that, the more people are allowed in our small town, 3.4 square miles, the more infrastructure damage is done to our streets. And like I said before, I don't want this town to turn into a Patterson, or a Springfield, or a Brooklyn, or a Queens. You know, let Nutley be Nutley, because, in my opinion, the leadership of this town for the past 10 or 14 years, it's destroying the culture and character of this town, which is a town full of small family homes. Let Nutley be an oasis in this corrupt county of Essex County. Let it be the town that it's supposed to be, a town of small family homes and businesses. That's why I'm for term limits. If the planning board and zoning board were doing a better job, I would be against term limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners on term limits?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Wayne Greenfetter, 224 Grant Avenue. The way I look at it is, we're dealing with a proposed solution, looking for a problem. There isn't a problem. There are term limits. If you're on a board, and you're not very good at it, the word's gonna get around, and you have the ability not to reappoint. That is the term limit. And that way, if you have someone that you really like, that you've evaluated the person, they're willing to work 40, 50 hours a month for free as a volunteer, why in God's name would you want that person off a board? Are you gonna be able to get someone in to do that amount of time? Are you gonna have people with the institutional memory that you really need? It is not easy to be on the zoning board or planning board, there's tremendous amount of knowledge you have to have. And the same thing with the library board. The things you have to do with finance, bidding, construction, we went, Mr. Tucci, who was willing to come on a day off, to come to the library and sit with us over construction problems we're having. You have to make sure on these boards, you have those kind of people. So if you have people that are on the board, why in God's name would you wanna take 'em off? And again, if someone isn't good, you have the full right to not reappoint 'em. You have the right to not reappoint 'em if you're mayor and council, if you just don't want to. There's no, none of us have a vested right to our position on a board. We could be removed, just wait for the time and let us go. And in terms of the perception of volunteers, I don't see where people don't have the ability to join, they have a lot of it. The perception is, we can't get people. Take a look at the Red Cross building, it's empty. There's no one in it. They ran out of volunteers, they couldn't do it. We have the Friends of the Library here. We're desperate for people. We need people to come and help raise money for the library, we need people for the book drive, we cannot get them. So if there are a lot of volunteers that really wanna become involved in this town, really help out with things like the library, we welcome you. Come to the Friends of the Library, get involved in it. Come to the library and read to kids. There are tremendous amount of volunteer jobs, we're begging for people. So if there's a perception that people cannot get involved, I think that's just wrong. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on term limits?
Tony Iannarone, 103 Rota Avenue. I addressed you last time, I think I could talk for about four hours about this subject.
Let's not, Mr. Iannarone.
But I know I have five minutes. You know, things change, times change, towns change, that's normal, that's natural. But certain things should be immutable, and what makes Nutley great is our traditions and our institutions. One of our traditions is that if you're on a board and you're doing a good job, you get reappointed, no matter who the mayor is. I'm very proud to have been appointed by seven mayors, some multiple times. First by Carmen Arecchio. I didn't go to him, he came to me. I won't tell you the nature of the problem, but I solved it for him by agreeing to join the board. His political rival at the time was Mayor Chennewith. They were exchanging back and forth, mayor commissioner, mayor commissioner. But Mayor Chennewith reappointed me, even though I was so closely associated with Carmen. I was reappointed by your father, Peter Scarpelli, by Gary Frenary, by Joanne Caciola, by then-mayor Alf Pacheco, and by you. You must have been doing some reason that you did it, I must have been doing some kind of a good job. The stress on being on a board is really being overdone. The guts of Nutley isn't necessarily in the boards, it's in its institutions. Now, this is not braggadocio, but just to tell you how you can get involved. I'm best known for being president of the library board. I'm in my 47th year as a trustee, and my 33rd as president. But, far beyond that, presently, I'm a founding member of the Matia Committee. I wrote all their rules, I incorporated them, I got their IRS exemption. I'm the only one who's been to all 45 dinners, and I'm still active. I'm a founding member of the Hall of Fame Committee, I wrote all their rules. I'm a founding member of the Friends of the Library, I incorporated them, I got their IRS exemption. Incidentally, no charge, no charge at all, for the hundreds and thousands of hours I've given this town. I spent 30 years as counsel to the auxiliary police, I worked with the Boy Scouts, I was a little league coach in American League for five years, I was a basketball coach for four years, I wrote all their rules. I'm presently a member of UNICO, the Third Half Club, the Historical Society. I mean, there's so many things I've done over the years, I was on the Family Service Board for six years. I was the chairman of the committee that renamed this building for Mayor Chennewith. That plaque downstairs in the lobby, I got it. So there's so many things you can do, the ones I've named, sure, and I've done a lot more than that, but you can be with the Kingsland Manor, they need people. You can be with the Walker Society, they need people. The Friends of the Library can always use people. There are dozens and dozens and dozens of things and ways you can get involved in this town. The service organizations, Rotary, UNICO, ELKS, whatever, the Irish-American Association, I can name dozens of them. So if you wanna get involved, you don't have to be on a board, you have to be on a board at all. In fact, I'd say that both of the activities, the Columbus Parade Committee, all of these groups, where are the people who are complaining? I don't see them on these organizations. Get out there, do something for the town, make it the great town it is. As I say, I could talk about this stuff for a long time, but I just don't see any need for this, and particularly, I think the complaints have been about two boards in particular, and the rest of us are being drawn into it, even though there's no complaint. I mean, you were in charge, in essence, of the library, and so were you, Mayor Scarpelli. We don't bring you problems, we bring you excellence. People love the place, I don't know what more we could do, or what more you could expect of us. We have a few building problems, but no performance problems. We work with the town, we work closely with the town. We're never a wild duck, we always work closely, so there's no issue. I just, really, this has been very, very upsetting to me, and I'm very, very dedicated to the library. Just let me give you one little example of what things happened. Next to the entrance of the library, there's a big brown stone, that came from the St. Mary's Church, originally from the Nutley Quarry, and it has a plaque on it, the Hospital La Roche. That was a gala event we held in 1990, it was a town event, not a library event, but we had hundreds of people there, it was a wonderful event, and as part of that, we gave that to Roche. That stone sat outside the gatehouse of Roche for a long time, they moved it when they changed the gatehouse. When they announced that Roche was leaving, one person remembered that stone. One person called Hapton La Roche about that stone. One person got Hapton La Roche to move that stone, and they had to find it, they didn't even know where it was, 'cause I knew where it was, to get that stone and put it next to the library, so that little piece of Nutley history is preserved. That person was I, 'cause I was the chairman of that gala event, and I knew about the stone. Things come up all the time. Last night, a man had a question, we had a program, about 70 people, a piano program, a man had a question about the piano. There was one person that could answer it, I could answer it. There's a plaque for Mr. Butler, that started the library funds in the circulation room. Why is that plaque there? I know why that plaque is there. That was the first funds. I've since raised over a half a million dollars in permanent funds that provide income for the library every year. I didn't do that in two terms, took a lot more than two terms. I still work on it diligently. So, from my standpoint, wholly apart from the fact that I do not believe it is legal, regardless of what the municipal, yeah, no, there's no specific overall statute, but there are statutes governing the library and other boards. Those are state statutes, they're very specific on their board membership, and they say nothing about term limits. That's why I don't think it's legal either. So thank you very much for your attention, and I hope we can resolve this. And as I say, if people wanna get involved in Nutley, it is the easiest thing in the world. There are dozens of good organizations that do good things for a lot of people, all you have to do is go, and they'll welcome you with open arms. Go work in the thrift shop, or any number of other places, the food bank, there are dozens, dozens of things you can do.
Thank you, Mr. Iannarone. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on term limits?
Tammy Rossi, 28 Colonial Terrace. The last meeting this idea was introduced, I spoke out in favor of term limits. I've listened to some of the board members tonight speak, and I commend you for the time and efforts you've put into serving this town. I think it's wonderful. But I also get a sense from some of these board members, they feel they have rights as a volunteer, and they will fight for their rights. How can that be? That is, that's basically saying, you're denying the rest of the populace in this town, who are willing and capable to serve on these boards, just because you wanna hold on to your position. And I ask, is that really a fair way to be an active participant in a community? This community needs to be more inclusive of all members. That when you have a community that is not that way, it becomes disjointed. People become strangers in town. That's not Nutley. Nutley has always been a close-knit community, but that inner close-knit part of Nutley that's always been around has to evolve and embrace the newcomers to town, and they have to offer them a term to serve on these boards. I hear conflicting comments about how difficult it is to find volunteers, which begs the question, how were these opportunities even publicized? Were they put on the cable channel? Were these opportunities on these boards posted in town hall downstairs? Many people I speak to never hear about these opportunities, and I've spoken to many citizens, very intelligent and capable and willing citizens, who are interested to serve on these boards, and they aren't even given a second thought, historically I'm speaking. So, right now, I think especially in this great time of change, where we have an influx of new citizens moving to town, from the city, from Brooklyn, from Jersey City, and they wanna become an active participant in this community, they ought to be given an opportunity. And this is where the term limits come in. There are members on the boards, some are past their prime, some of them, and I won't state names, but some of them miss meetings, some of them are not really giving a intelligible vote yes or no, they're just a yes vote every time. And this is concerning, especially with the building going on in town. I see a lot of yes voting. So with this said, I do believe that it is necessary to have term limits, and I hope you will consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rossi.
Hi, my name's Charles Licklin, 36 Hampton Place, a lot of people have known me as Corey. I'm not so much for term limits with volunteers, I put a lot of volunteering in my town, in the town myself, but more so for elected politicians. I think that that's part of our problem. The gentleman said before, it's good enough for the governor, it's good enough for the president, no offense, I think it's good enough for you guys too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on term limits?
Patricia Dougherty, 38
Patricia Dougherty, three eighty-seven Hillside Avenue. Last night, I was sworn in as Alternative Three member of the zoning board. I'd like to just share a personal anecdote that may reflect on what we're talking about tonight. For the past several months, over the course of the past year, I had been attending Planning Board and Board of Commission meetings whenever my work schedule allowed. I live in the neighborhood of On Three, and I was particularly interested in what the plans were for that. The evening of the On Three Phase One presentation, I attended to find out what Prism was going to be presenting and offering to the board in terms of the vote, and what the entire phase would involve. I was surprised to find out, when I was at the Planning Board, that I was the only member of the Nutley public, except for another resident, who was attending this very important presentation. I live in the neighborhood, but I was also not within the two-hundred-foot range of On Three, all of those people who were informed that there was a very important meeting that they could attend, offer feedback and comment. And I had a number of questions of Mr. Diaz and the Prism representatives, they're engineers, they're architects. I believe I made myself a pest. Ms. Tangora will probably concur that a lot of my questions made the evening go overly long. After the meeting, Mayor Scarpelli came over to me and said, would you be interested in serving on one of the boards? And I said, I would be. And he appointed me, and I'm looking forward to learning as much as I can over the term that I have, and contributing as much as I can to the township of Nutley. I've been here twenty years, not a native, but I do love the town, and I feel that, and hope that I can contribute a lot by serving on the board.
Thank you, Starney. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on Term Limits?
John Simcoe, thirty-two Maple Place. I chair the Historic Preservation Committee, and what I think the best thing to come out of all this tonight is the thought that word is not getting out to everyone, that there are these positions that are open, and there are these volunteer positions. That's what I would love to see come out of here, because I think you guys already got the tools to get rid of people on the board, to decide that somebody has overstayed their welcome, or that it's just time for new blood, but to be forced, to be put out, I don't think it's the way that you get a good board. I think the woman who spoke earlier, just before me, is a perfect example of how people should come on these boards. There are plenty of volunteer opportunities. I volunteered, I'm not a Nutley native, I volunteered for a lot of different things before somebody noticed me and asked me to join the board, and I've been happy to do it since then, and I expect that that's the way that people should come. It's not so much a sort of learning as you are training on the board. I've had nobody from the public come to any of our meetings who are interested, who are sitting around looking to volunteer to see what they could do, without being a board member. So, I don't think it's necessarily that newcomers need to be appointed to a board as their first experience to volunteer and to help this town. It's how I got there, it's how I hear other people got there, and again, I think you guys have got all of the tools to make that happen, to make sure that we don't become stagnant, that we remain diverse, and I think that we should just all believe in what we're doing, rather than imposing these limits.
Thank you, Mr. Simcoe. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on Term Limits?
Good evening, Barbara Hirsch, four seven seven Washington Avenue. No, I'm not really in favor of term limits, because I think the process we have in place is very good. However, I do agree with some of the previous speakers, we need to have more communication. We need to get out there and say yes, in some way. Mayor, I have to commend you for what you've done recently in looking at people who have volunteered, who were interested in volunteering, and they've been recently appointed to boards. Also, I noticed there's some communication that you are now putting out a little blog called The Nut, which I think is very helpful too, in telling us about things that are happening in town. So, I think we have to open communication, I think this is a good forum, actually, to hear different people. I've been in this community, and now I'm giving away my age, for three-quarters of a century, and I'm still okay, you know, just saying. I've seen it all, from, for the last seventy-five years. We have a wonderful town, we have wonderful people. I do not want to serve unappointed board, I'm not looking to do that, but I serve on many boards, volunteer boards, I am president of the Friends of the Library. Please, we welcome you. I serve on many other boards, we welcome new people. So, just give me a call, and I have a place for you. I even have some things on my table at home that really need to be done right now, for the Friends of the Library, come to me. So, thank you very much, and again, I commend the Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on Term Limits? Commissioner, you want to come in now, later?
I'll come in now. The question is, where do we go from here? I know I learned a lot tonight, I think a lot of us learned a lot tonight. And what came out of this are a few things, is passion. Passion for the people who have, are opposed to term limits, for very good legitimate reasons, and people who are for term limits. At the end of the day, two things came out, and I'm glad we had this, because the one underlying factor is, all this good stuff's going on, and we're not communicating, as Ms. Hirsch said, we're not. And that's we, me too. We're not communicating to the public. So, the question is, where do we go from here? So, I have a proposal to my colleagues, and if you'd like to add some input, where we could really do something significant here, we might be the first town in the state of New Jersey that maybe will proposing this if we haven't done it already. The pathway to participation, can we set up an apprentice mentoring program for each of these boards? Where people don't have to be appointed to the boards, but like Patricia's your name? If I may? Patricia's a prime example of a citizen who stepped up and wanted to get involved and self-motivated herself. But if we open up the doors and set up an apprentice mentoring program where, and I know we all do, over the summer, how many college kids come to us and say they want to work, they want to get involved? So, we, or the mayor, the appointing authority, you would assign these people, and when I talk about apprentice and people to mentor, I'm also talking about high school kids. I mean, to get the millennial generation involved in governing, and in learning about the process of government, and what you do, and the values and rewards of volunteerism, that would be exciting. So, here's what I'm going to do. First and foremost, putting aside all of the possible legal issues, and there are, I've heard, you know, you get ten lawyers in a room, five say this and five say that, and no offense to the lawyers in the room, but it isn't a question of legality, because there are legal hurdles that we would have to jump over, and I'm not going to take the town that road. So, I'm going to withdraw the ordinance, I'm going to withdraw that ordinance, and I would ask this, that maybe we could get together, I'll get together with you, why don't we set up an apprentice mentoring program that we open up to the citizens of this town, get it on a website, mayor, we'll invite people to just try to come on board and volunteer for these boards, and I think we would all benefit about that. Is there any input or objections or anything?
Commissioner, I look forward to working with you on that.
Right.
And, you know, the specifics of how that works out, but I think it's a good idea to get people involved, and, you know, I think we can work something out with that.
Because we all have the same, we all have the same desire to make sure our township and the people of this township work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Roy Moore, four sixty-two Chestnuts D. Mr. Scarpelli, I don't know if you've heard about Civil Cities, I believe it's called. I know Newark was the first city to do that, which is exactly what Mr. Rogers is saying. And it's, the mayor, I believe it was done on J. Channel thirteen, Mr. Aaron is a reporter, and he helped spearhead this, where the mayor opens the city, and the mayor invites other people in, which handbooks are given out, because I saw one of the handbooks, it was very impressive, how government works, who does what, what are the boards for, what, how the town functions. Now, I know Newark was the only one who did that, but this is a great opportunity for Nutley, to be the second one to do that, and I think it's exactly what Commissioner Rogers is saying, that we should do as a mentoring program, and I applaud you for that. But I think that we should look into that.
We'll look into that, Mr. Moore, and see what Newark did.
I'd be happy to help you with that.
And, Mr. Mayor, if we can get the boards to send us all of what we heard, because Department of Public Affairs, I always said I'd like to utilize that department as our marketing tool for the township. We've got great departments here, great services, maybe we'll go down that road.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic? So, we have a good crowd here tonight.
The same topic, what I'd just like to propose is that we get together the chairs of each of the organizations we're talking about, meet with you guys, because as we learned today, each of these boards are very different, and the abilities that we've got are different, the ways that we can mentor people are different, so I would love for all the commissioners, for all of the chairs of those different boards to get together with you guys and to begin that process. I think that's a wonderful idea.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simcoe.
Brad Bondroff, thirty-two Colonial Terrace. Hearing everyone just kind of speak what they're saying, it's really about communication. I mean, we talk about the town's changing, it is. I mean, there's, and I know everyone says that if I put in a resume, or anyone my age or younger that's from Nutley, and I know they look at, you know, Nutleyites as being what, I'm proud of that. That's why I'm still in this town, and some of my friends are also still in this town for that reason. But, a lot of them work outside of this town. We have knowledge that we learn, and I'm talking to kind of everybody in a sense that there is no communication in that aspect, like, there isn't, there is, and I do, I saw, I almost couldn't wait to comment on your post on the blog, because I can answer a bunch of those questions. But some of those questions I couldn't answer, but I know where to go to get them, and I'm proud of that. And the reason I say that, because I think the volunteerism is love, because we don't have time. I just finished a run, and I saw Tammy leaving here and going to UCM, and I was like, oh, man, I don't know if I can, but I want to hear it, I want to be involved, because it's important. I mean, Nutley to me, I'm proud of, and I think everyone on this board is, you could say what you want here, till you get out to all the masses and get public involved, even if it's in the park somewhere, not, more people show up, and maybe you'll get people, you know what, I'm going to get involved. And I think, I don't think you would deny any of us if you put an application in, and if you did, then I feel then, maybe there's discrimination, but I don't think there would be. It's about getting people involved, and there's a lot of passion, young, not new, young blood. And that young blood is here, and it's in this town, and I think they want to get involved. And it's kind of what it's about, it's not, I don't want to say term limits, because you're right, you get two term limits, you get a good guy and he's gone, how are you getting him back? Are they going to have to rotate back in? You want to find the passionate people that are willing to commit to the township and what this town's built on. And that's kind of what I want to just add to what Commissioner Rogers was just saying. You know, you got to get out there, get there, find people that will be willing to get the word out and to get involved, because the Friends of the Library, to me, that's, my son goes there every day after school, I want to hear these programs they're doing, I want to get involved in that. But when you're in a household that is two people working, you don't find the time, you got to make the time. And I did today, and I'm glad I did, because I hope that this is something heard by all of you, and you start to announce it to really the youth of our town, so that people can come in and decide, you put in a resume, like, I can't wait to see that portal. So, I would like to put a resume in, because I don't think anyone knows what I do, and if they do, they don't know the depth of it. And there's a lot of people in our town that do good work outside of here, that can bring the knowledge internal and really make a change.
Thank you, Mr. Bondroff.
Barbara Hirsch, four seven seven Washington Avenue. I think the idea of having high school students particularly involved in this kind of process is wonderful. Now, the students are required to have a Community Day of Service, which is going to be occurring at Nutley High School this April. Also, I had the privilege the other day of working with almost fifty high school kids. We made, it's called the Linus Project, we made blankets for babies and for the elderly. These young people want to volunteer, and I think if we can get them into mentorship programs, this would be wonderful. So, again, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic?
Gina Summers, twenty-seven Stewart Avenue. I'm here to address the building, the mixed-use multifamily buildings. My family and I, we're pretty much all in agreement that we don't see how continuing to add the multifamily buildings aligns with our town's goal of being a suburban center. Our town's website boasts that it's designed for walking and biking, but in fact, the opposite. I could be wrong, but I don't believe I see any designated bike lanes in Nutley. The approval of each new building results in an increase to the rental population, which negatively affects community involvement, decreases home values, brings increased traffic congestion and overcrowding in our schools. When we moved here seven-plus years ago, my husband and I compared a number of statistics in our search for the right place to raise our family. We were looking to purchase a home, not to rent an apartment. A couple items on our list are two being discussed tonight, the ratio of renters to homeowners, and no overnight street parking. At the time, Nutley had a low renter-to-homeowner ratio, in fact, it was very low. I'm not sure what that number is now, but if I was moving to Nutley today, we would more than likely skip right over Nutley as our top choice. My family and I prefer to walk, bike, and use public transportation daily. With Nutley's three-mile radius, it's not difficult to leave my car behind when I want to run errands around town. It seems that almost on a daily basis, either I'm running out of the way of an oncoming vehicle that is blatantly disregarding pedestrian right-of-way mandates, stop signs, and even red lights, or I'm witnessing my children escape near-death collisions as they cross Passaic Ave coming home from school. Just walking here tonight, a car ran through stop signs and almost hit us. This is far from the culture and warm feelings we had when we first moved here. How do you plan to mitigate the problems to our infrastructure? The approval of each new building brings increased traffic, unsafe walking and biking conditions, increasing amount of distracted drivers with blatant disregard for pedestrians and bicyclists, overcrowding in our schools, a strain on access for first responders and our public utilities. Just last spring, I was once again burdened with having to show my proof of residency to the Board of Ed, which is more than likely stemming from our exhaustive overcrowding problem. This was the third time that I had to do this since we moved here. It seems that we can't handle the pace at which we're growing, and our children will be the collateral damage.
Thank you, Ms. Summers.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
Ms. Summers, oh, this is your, this is your daughter?
Yes.
And what's your name?
My name is Brayden Summers.
Well, I didn't know you were coming up, but I was going to ask you, I was actually, I was going to ask your mother permission for me to ask you to come up. I notice you're in the scouting.
Yes.
Well, I want to thank you very much for being involved in scouting, and I know all the adults here are probably as proud as you, as I am, and you keep up the good work, and thanks for being here, and thanks for being involved in scouting.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, my name is Brayden Summers, twenty-seven Stewart Ave. I wanted to say thank you for opening up the discussion of single-use plastic and looking into ways to move towards more environmental-friendly options. I've been working on a project in order to earn my Silver Award for Girl Scouts, and I have spent a significant amount of time researching the negative effects of single-use plastic bags. I conducted a town-wide survey, some individuals in this room may have even participated, and would love to share the results and my research with you, as I think it may be helpful in moving forward. One of the requirements for completion of my project is education and awareness. Sharing my results and speaking to you about my research will help with earning this high ranking award, and I'm asking for the opportunity to do so. I've also commenced a social media platform of hashtag BYORBNutley, which means Bring Your Own Reusable Bag Nutley. This is currently a Senate, there is currently a Senate bill introduced to Governor Murphy, which has support of local green initiatives, and the New Jersey Sierra Club, and if signed... which has support of local green initiatives and the New Jersey Sierra Club, and if signed, would outlaw the use of single-use plastics in the entire state of New Jersey, and is said to be the most comprehensive and strongest plastic bill in the nation. In New Jersey, our post-consumer plastics recycling rates may vary between 6% to 9%. Almost 20 towns in one county have or are working on plastic banning. By reducing how much plastic we use, we will see less litter and less plastic bags harming our wildlife and ecosystems. Please let me know when is the best time to present my findings and research results to you. Thank you. And I also have reusable bags for you.
Thank you very much. We'll be in contact when we, we want to see your survey.
Brayden, I just wanted to mention, Tom Evans, hi. I saw your note today when I was in the office, so I did respond to you. And I look forward to getting, to get together with you next week.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on any item? Seeing none? Move to the adjournment? Oh, sorry.
Not yet. One more, sorry.
Tammy Rossi, 28 Colonial Terrace. I just wanted to follow up on a few items. So, the research is continuing on the impact of further apartments being built? Mayor Tucci?
Yes. My proposal is that the research continues. I think I, I touched on many of the major impacts, but I'm sure there are others that I've missed and that there are others out there who are much more qualified than I am to do even deeper research, because I think the last thing we want is development by accident. All right? And we don't want to wake up one day and realize that our town looks nothing like what we wanted it to look like if we don't, if we didn't take the proper steps to manage the growth and to plan for the future.
Right. Right. So, I just want to remind you again, it's been over 10 years since the zoning board asked from the planning board for that definition for mixed-use intensity. I hope whatever further research needs to be done is done in a timely manner, because 10 years is an awful long time.
If, I'm sure it will be.
Okay.
And I plan on budgeting for that in this 2019 budget, and I also plan on getting total involvement from our planning board and our zoning board and all of the good people that served there and all of our professionals, because they have information that some of us maybe wouldn't even think of. So, we want to take advantage of all those years of knowledge.
Great. Thank you very much. And one last question for Mr. Janetempo. The status of the negotiation or litigation with the developer and his code violations? I know the last meeting you said you were getting close.
We are very close. We're hoping to have something, we thought we could have something tonight, but probably at the next meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you. And will this developer be charged the penalties per infraction per day? So, for example, the building that he had two-bedroom apartments, from the date he received the CO to today, will he be charged a fine per infraction per day from that date to current?
I really, and I know we've been down this road and I don't mean to be evasive, but if you can just wait another week, two weeks or so, we'll get you the document, hopefully you could see it for yourself.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on any topic? Seeing none?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Bishop Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Goodnight, everybody. Thank you for coming.
The time is 8:59.